Good afternoon and welcome. We're going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. It is August 13th, 2024, Tuesday. We're calling our regularly scheduled board meeting to order. It's 5:01 PM. Thank you all for joining us. Thank you, board colleagues, for joining us today. Dr. Stubblefield, to all of our staff, any guests and visitors that are present here, both in person or online, welcome and thank you for joining us. Before I forget, we do have language services available today. If you need interpretation, we do have interpreters available for simultaneous interpretation. Just raise your hand, let one of our staff persons know, and we'll make sure that we get an interpreter for you. So we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order as we do at every board meeting. I'll read our board norms and protocols. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we're following our norms when conducting district business. Again, thank you for joining us, everyone. Welcome. With that, Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's regular agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Further questions or discussion? Hearing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Robert Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. And just before we continue with our agenda, just one quick clarification. I know some folks, there was some confusion today about whether today on the agenda is the hearing on the revenue neutral. That hearing is on September 10th. It is not on tonight's agenda. The board is not having a conversation regarding revenue neutral tonight. That will happen on September 10th. So you're welcome to stay if you're here for that or and/or also come back on September 10th for the public hearing for the revenue neutral. And that is at 5:00 PM. So we'll jump right into our agenda. First on our agenda is our awards and recognition, and I would invite Dr. Jarius Jones to the podium.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening. Dr. Stubblefield, I am so pleased to present to you the Cohort 19 of the Teaching Fellows. I was a part of the very first cohort in 2001. And so it is a great pleasure to be able to bring them before you. We have some very talented individuals who I believe are going to make a difference in the lives of our scholars, and I'm going to bring the individuals who will introduce themselves to, who have been supporting these great people as they are transitioning into our school district. So I'm going to ask Ms. Kim Smith, Ms. Kim Smith, to come before me, and she will introduce and also speak to her colleague who also supported our Teaching Fellows. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, President Randy Lopez, Vice President Rachel Russell, members of the board, and Dr. Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am privileged to introduce you to the Kansas City, Kansas Teaching Fellows for Cohort 19. Ms. Emily Austin will teach art with J.C. Harmon High School.
Turn around. There you go.
Mr. Gary Bradley Lopez will teach theater at Eisenhower Middle School. Ms. Priscilla Flores will teach Spanish at Sumner Academy. Ms. Eulenia Higgins will teach business at Eisenhower Middle School. Ms. Dunya McDonald will teach Spanish at Gloria Willis Middle School. Ms. Anita Sims will teach art at Carl B. Bruce Middle School. Ms. Virginia Werb will teach biology at J.C. Harmon High School. Ms. Taywon Kim will teach math at Washington High School. Mr. Jake Reynolds will teach business at Washington High School. And Ms. Carson Sakita will teach English at Sumner Academy. Please join me in congratulating our Kansas City, Kansas Teaching Fellows for Cohort 19.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, Dr. Jones and Ms. Smith, and again, congratulations to our Teaching Fellows. Looking forward to some great things, and as always, if you need any assistance or support, we are here for you as a board and as leadership, so please reach out. Next on our agenda, we will have our community comment. As always, everyone is welcome to give comment. Please sign up the Monday before the board meeting by noon to place your name with the board clerk. Make sure the board clerk has your information as you sign up for comment. We, the board, reserves up to 20 minutes for community comment during the board meetings. Please make sure that you check in with the board clerk and you give your name. You don't have to give your contact information when you speak, but please give your name, and then your time will start. You have three minutes to speak. I will let you know when you have 30 seconds left, and then we'll let you know when your time is up as well. And if there's any handouts, please make sure that you have enough for the entire board. You can give copies to Ms. Smith and/or email those as well to Ms. Smith or board clerk. So with that, we would welcome Mr. Michael Rebny to the podium. You can give those to Ms. Smith. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll make sure that the board gets those and our leadership as well.
All right, great. My name is Michael Rebny. I use he/him pronouns, and I just want to say it was cool to see the Teaching Fellows group come up here because I was a member of the KC KPS Teaching Fellows Cohort 9. So not quite as far back as Dr. Jones, but always back. Good to see you back, anyway. So, yeah, so thank you, Board, Board President Randy Lopez and Dr. Stubblefield, excuse me, for hearing my comments today. So generally, I think it is best for those most impacted by a policy to speak to it. But in the process of organizing our coalition to come up tonight, I learned that many LGBTQ staff and students don't feel safe publicly presenting to our school board. That communicates a lot to me about a level of fear and upsets me. And so in a different way, that kind of makes me an impacted person, and so I wanted to share kind of some of my feelings around this. So as a teacher of 16 years in USD 500, I believe deeply in the safety of all students. I was really disturbed by the comments of some speakers at a previous board meeting, the last one, in fact, which demanded that teachers violate the human rights of our students to be safe in their identity. It clarified for me and for others that the district really needs an out, a public-facing policy around these issues that support LGBTQ students and staff. Students who are transgender or gender nonconforming often face persistent and severe harassment that can involve name-calling, threats of violence, sexual innuendos, or sexual harassment, and even physical assault. This mistreatment impacts many students, even those who don't self-identify as trans or non-binary. In fact, a recent study of California students found that 53% of students said their schools were not safe for guys who weren't as masculine as other guys, and 34% of students said their schools were not safe for girls who weren't as feminine as other girls. While I don't have precise data for Kansas City, I don't think anyone who has spent significant time in both our schools and schools around the metro would argue that our numbers would be significantly different in terms of student-staff feelings. The impact the school climate has on students significantly affects their ability to learn. All students can learn, but only if the school climate is safe for all students, including those who are transgender and gender nonconforming. The resolution we're putting forward, and that I shared with you in the folder, will move the district a significant step closer to a policy that affirms LGBTQ-plus students and staff
30 seconds.
and protects them against bullying and harassment. So it does a number of important things. It acknowledges the problem of transphobia and homophobia. It reinforces that one of the most effective mental health interventions is affirming gender identity. It supports board policy prohibiting staff harassment. It supports Wyandotte County Municipal Codes prohibiting discrimination. It supports federal law that prohibits the same thing. It provides for support of LGBTQIA students in every building, provides specific measures to keep LGBTQIA-plus students and their allies safer in every building, and supports the district in implementing real policy for these concerns. So I think for all of these reasons, I appreciate the board seriously considering this resolution and moving forward on a public-facing policy to protect our kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll make sure we share your documents with the full board and with Dr. Stubblefield. Thank you. Next up, and I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's names ahead of time, I would call up Nikki Actipis.
Sorry, I'm much shorter, and you did excellent pronouncing that, so thank you so much. My name is Nikki Actipis, and I just want to say thank you to the board and Dr. Stubblefield and all of you folks here today for coming and just hearing us out. So I'm a science teacher over at Wyandotte High School, and I identify as a non-binary educator. So that means I fall under the trans umbrella. So as Mr. Rebny has already said, there are multiple, multiple staff members and students that do not feel comfortable coming forward, and I'm going to be quite honest, I'm one of those people. But I'm here today because I want to do right by my students who do not feel like they have an option to exist openly, to exist as they are. I am here for the students who do not feel like they have a safe adult to confide in, whether that's at school or home or elsewhere in the world. And I'm here because there have, there are students who have chosen to stop existing because they do not have the support they truly need. Queer teens are three and a half times more likely to make an attempt on their own lives than their peers. Fewer than one in three trans and non-binary youth find their homes to be supportive and gender-affirming. So that's one in three feel safe at home. Growing up is challenging enough to, is challenging enough. But being queer truly adds a blend of intersectional layers that are difficult to navigate. Many teens hesitate to come out to their parents due to fear of rejection, lack of support, concerns about family dynamics, and cultural or religious beliefs. They might still be uncertain about their own identities and have negative experiences before, or they worry that their home isn't safe for such conversations. So many fear their parents will not keep their information private or share it with other folks that they're not ready to come out to. Each individual's situation is unique, and they might choose to wait until they feel more secure or feel accepted. So I speak for myself, and I feel like I speak for several of my coworkers. As educators, we own the duty of supporting our students. So this includes affirming their rights to privacy while they transition into adulthood. So I'm asking you, as the board and as also educators in your own right, to ratify this. Do what's right by our students, do what's right by our staff.
Thank you. Next, I'll invite Rachel Brown to the podium. Rachel Brown, if you're here. Go to our next comment. I'd invite Crystal Jaquel-Kunz to the podium.
President Lopez, KC KPS Board of Education, and Dr. Stubblefield, thank you for your time and attention today and for your hopeful future action. Well, would you like a snack? No, we don't want a snack. Oh, you do want a snack. My name is Crystal Jaquel-Kunz. This is Molly Jaquel-Kunz. I live at 1316 North 20th Street, Kansas City, Kansas, behind the great Wyandotte Bulldogs as home, but I am a teacher heading into my 12th year at the even greater J.C. Harmon. I'm here to speak as an ally, parent, community member, and a proud educator in Wyandotte County in support of the LGBTQIA-identifying students and staff in our school district. In the previous Board of Education meeting on July 23rd, there were public comments made that inaccurately addressed a nonexistent policy regarding the false dichotomy of parents' rights and ensuring the safety of transgender students. The policy spoken about is non-existent because KC KPS does not currently have an explicit policy regarding the safety of LGBTQ students to learn in a safe environment and for staff to teach safely. The policy was inaccurately addressed, as those who spoke about it demonstrated concern for the lack of parental rights in the policy. However, it is well documented in many board meetings across the country that those who are privileged, I'm sorry, those who are privileging the rights of parents and topics that are contentious or socially liberal are more concerned about schools allowing children to exist as they identify. Organizations like the Human Rights Campaign and American Civil Liberties Union have shown that protections for LGBTQ students in schools is measurably good for their mental health. Besides, this isn't even an issue about parents' rights because parents can always access students' records, which is explicitly stated in the KC KPS LGBTQ-plus Freedom to Learn Resolution that is being proposed this evening by Michael Rebny. As mandatory reporters, it is incumbent upon staff in school buildings to believe and protect our students. For example, three years ago, when a transgender student told me that their parents would not support the pronouns and the name they use at school, as in that parent's lack of support would cause harm to the student, I followed the lead of that student in my communications with their parents. If parents' rights are privileged over the safety of students, then we are in violation of our first priority as a school system. The egregious public comments made at the last scheduled board meeting have served as a great reminder for the need for an explicit policy that protects, does not prevent, the rights of LGBTQ students and staff in KC KPS. Although we are mandatory reporters, staff need to know how to support students through training and with explicit policy that guides our actions as mandatory reporters in circumstances that include LGBTQ students. I urge the board to consider and support the approval of the KC KPS LGBTQ-plus Freedom to Learn Resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I'll invite Cindy Thomas to the podium.
Hi, my name is Cindy Thomas, and I am a Wyandotte County resident and a Wyandotte County educator. And since we're all claiming it, I was in the second cohort of the Teaching Fellows. A long time ago. So, thank you, board and superintendent, for the opportunity to speak again. I'm actually more anxious tonight, I think. I just, I want to start by expressing my gratitude for the positive responses and support I received from the KC KPS community following that board meeting on July 16th. Originally that night, I had only planned to observe and stand as an ally for the LGBTQIA community, but when the opportunity presented itself, thank you, Board Member Russell, to speak up and speak against the homophobic rhetoric, I couldn't remain silent. In July, I spoke of love and acceptance, and the crowd had an interesting response to that. But those adults are not really my primary concern. I don't know what kind of Road to Damascus moment is required to turn away from hate wrapped in the guise of Christian concern, but I do hope a change of heart is waiting for those who hold that belief. What's crucial is that I remember the core values I learned as a child, faith, hope, and love. And those are the principles I've strived to embody in my life and my work as an educator. Tonight, I really want to encourage everyone to think about what being an ally means. Sometimes I can get blinded by my own levels of privilege because I present in a certain way to society, and I forget how dangerous it can be to be different in today's world. Being an ally isn't about making grand gestures, but it's about everyday actions and attitudes that make a difference. To be a true ally, you must strive to understand different perspectives and be willing to confront your own biases and assumptions. And I will say, I appreciate KC K's DEI Department for providing that opportunity to staff. Some in our community claim that they don't know any LGBTQIA individuals, and according to data from as late as 2024, that's a statistical impossibility. Nearly 8% of Americans identify as a member of the queer community. If you believe you don't know anyone who is trans, gay, or gender nonconforming, what it actually is, is those people don't feel safe enough with you to tell you who they really are, and that speaks volumes. As an educator, my mission has always been to help my students develop and to pursue their dreams. In closing, I just want to encourage everyone to consider how you can use your unique position to support and advocate for those who might need it. Don't assume people know how you feel and think. Speak up and speak out. At this time in our community and in our country, we're at a crossroads. We can choose community or chaos, diversity or divisiveness. I choose love every time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll invite Liz Freeman.
Hi there. Thank you to the board for allowing me to comment. My name is Liz Freeman, and this right here is Luciano, my six-year-old nephew. He is going to be a first grader at New Stanley Elementary. Tomorrow is his first day. And funnily enough, New Stanley is where I attended school. I'm an alum of KC KPS, graduated from Sumner, but attended New Stanley and Argentine. And now I get to watch my nephew also attend New Stanley and next go on to Argentine and then hopefully Sumner. But I'm up here to talk with you all and urge you all to support the $260 million bond proposal that is being discussed this, tonight's meeting. With that bond proposal, it would allow for improvements to Argentine and New Stanley, both schools that my nephew will be attending, and having attended both those schools myself and Sumner, the repairs and improvements that are necessary are, they're necessary for our next generation. And it's on us as a community to invest in those resources. You know, my own experience with KC KPS, I had a wonderful educational experience, and all I want is for my nephew to have an even better educational experience. And so that means ensuring and advocating as much as I can that we as a community are investing in our schools, we're investing in our students, and that we're encouraging them and empowering them to continue their educational journey, whether that's within KC KPS or beyond post-graduation. And so that's, I really just wanted to urge you all to vote in support. And Luciano, is there anything you wanted to say? Okay, earlier he told me he wanted to make sure you guys know that he loves his school, and he's excited for his first day tomorrow. So thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your time today, for speaking. As we do after every board meeting, a member of our leadership team will reach out to you, so please make sure our board clerk does have your contact information. Our leadership team will reach out to you to see if there's any follow-up, any follow-up discussion that you would like to have with our leadership team. We'll continue with our agenda. Next up, board, is item four on our agenda, our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion on the consent? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, Board is our Turner Quarterly Report. Ms. Levers is not with us tonight, but she has submitted the quarterly report. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to accept as an informational item the Turner Quarterly Report?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there questions or discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Board is item six, Updates and Approval. Board, these items have come before you at least once and are up for potential action if it is the will of the Board. Our first item, it's recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the purchase of 18 cafeteria tables from School Specialty Supply in the amount of $25,174.98 for Argentine Middle School in accordance with Policy DJEG, as submitted by Mr. Wayne Carell, Mr. Steve Lilly, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Next item is item number seven, New Business. Board, this is up for information only tonight. No action is being requested of the Board, but it is here in case there are any questions. This is the MOU between the Unified Government Health Department and Sumner Academy. Are there any questions on this particular MOU or item that can be answered tonight? Seeing and hearing none. Board, if you do have questions after reviewing this further, please submit those to Dr. Stubblefield. We'll make sure that we get any additional information or answer any questions that come in. This may come before the Board again at a future board meeting for potential action if it is the will of the Board. But if there are questions, please submit those to Dr. Stubblefield. Our next item, Board, is item eight, our Board Policy, and I will hand this off to you. Mr. Goheen.
So, the policies that you have in front of you tonight are the policies recommended, policy changes or updates recommended by KASB. We have gone through and reviewed and identified those policies being recommended by KASB that we think the Board should adopt or should modify their current policies on. And I'm just going to walk through those policies one at a time. Some of them we are not recommending that be adopted. All the policies went out to the Board in an email from my office. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to look at those. They're also on Board Docs in a redlined fashion so that you have them to review. The first policy is Board Policy BBG, which deals with consultants. This is a model policy, KASB. Ours is slightly different from the KASB model policy. KASB is recommending that this policy be deleted from the policy handbook because Board Policy CJ, use of consultants, it's duplicative of it. We don't see a problem with deleting Policy BBG consultants. You do have a model policy, Board Policy CJ, that's attached as well as BBG. So our recommendation is to follow KASB's recommendation to delete Policy BBG, which you would do as a part of a first read tonight. So, just like a policy you're adopting, if you're deleting one, we do it through reads in case there's any concerns. The next policy is Policy BCBK, which deals with executive sessions. Our policy is slightly different than the model policy. We've incorporated the proposed changes from KASB into our current policy, and we do recommend that you adopt that change for first read tonight. Policy CJ, use of consultants, this is the one that we just referred to up above. We have incorporated the proposed changes from KASB and suggest that you make those proposed changes to our policy, which is slightly different than the KASB policy. Board Policy CL, which is administrative teams, we don't currently use this model policy, and we do not recommend adopting it at this time. Policy EBBG, which is a cardiac emergency response planning policy, this is a new model policy from KASB, and we do recommend that the Board adopt it. Policy EE is a food service policy. It seems like there's a change to this policy every six months. The policy changes are usually driven by regulations from the Department of, I think it's Agriculture, that's the department, from the US Department. In any event, our policy is a little bit different, but we do recommend that we adopt the changes proposed by KASB to our model policy EE. And then Board Policy GAC, which is sexual harassment, we have a slightly different policy. The proposed changes being proposed by KASB all deal with the new Title IX regulations. Those regulations are currently stayed pursuant to a federal court injunction, so at this time, we do not recommend making those changes until we know what the outcome of that litigation is. Policy GRA, GRIA, which deals with pregnant and parenting employees. This is a new policy that this Board adopted in its March meeting. They're proposing changes to it. Some of the changes deal with lactation breaks and space that we do recommend the Board adopt. The other changes deal with the new Title IX regulations, which again are subject to an injunction, so we do not recommend that Board adopt those portion of the changes. We have incorporated the changes we think should be made into a draft policy, which is present that we do recommend the Board adopt tonight as its first read. The next one is Policy ID, which is instructional program. Our policy differs significantly from the KASB policy, and we do not recommend making the changes they have proposed. We recommend staying with our current policy. Board Policy IF, which is textbooks. Our Board Policy differs from the KASB model policy. We've modified our policy to reflect the proposed changes and recommend those be adopted. Policy JGEC is sexual harassment, and it relates to students. Again, this, all the changes relate to the Title IX regulations, so we suggest that those be delayed until we have a final outcome from the court case before we make any changes to that policy. Board Policy JGECAA. This policy, again, is a new policy proposed by KASB. We don't have this policy. The majority of it relates to Title IX, and we're not recommending that you make those policy changes. However, certain portions of this policy relate to pregnant students, and that's covered by our Board Policy JQE. So we recommend making those changes that are proposed to our policy JQE instead of JGECAA with the alphabet soup that we've got going here. But we do think that that, those policy changes should be made, but we just think they should be made to a different policy, so we recommend those be adopted. Policy JGFGA deals with the administration of emergency opioid antagonists. We have a fairly significant different policy, but we do attempt to incorporate those proposed changes from KASB into our policy. Recommend those be made. And JH, Student Activities, our policy differs significantly, but we've incorporated the proposed changes from KASB's policy into our policy and recommend those be made. And finally, Board Policy KK, which is Disposal of District Property. The proposed changes are due to a statutory change from the legislature, and we do have the KASB model policy as our adopted policy in this case, and we do recommend those changes be made. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions the Board might have about any of the specific policies, but we do make the recommendation that we accept for first read as we've outlined in the presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Goheen, are there questions for Mr. Goheen on these policies presented for first read? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept for first read those policies as recommended by Mr. Goheen tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there questions or further discussion?
I have a question. I guess my question is the deletion of policies. What, can you clarify what that process? You're saying automatically delete it? Because the current motion is just to approve the policies as...
I think the current, I read the current motion is to make the policy changes as recommended by my report. Included in that report would be a deletion of the policies that we identified. I think there were only, I think there was only one that was being deleted, and I think another one that was being recommended to not adopt. That would all be for first read, so it would all still come back, even the recommended deletions. So if the Board were to decide at the second read or even the third read that they don't want to delete or they want to maintain a portion of a policy that's being recommended for deletion, you could still do so.
So on the second read, the policies where you went and updated the reference policies, those are also on here in addition to the ads? So the next time we see it, we would see it with those additions?
That may be misunderstanding.
So, for instance, you said, hmm, the one about students. I just want to make sure that I'm tracking this correctly.
The one on...
Rental.
JQE.
JQE.
Yeah.
You're saying next time that policy will be up for a second read.
Correct.
So tonight, we're accepting your amendments to those.
As for first read.
Then it'll come back as the first read, but it'll come back as the second read. But JGECAA won't be...
It'll still be on there because you, my recommendation is that you not adopt that policy. So that recommendation will stay, but that model policy that KASB has will stay on here because that was part of the report, would be how I interpret it.
What we could do...
If you don't, if you want me to take that one out, just...
I'm just struggling to track the deletions as well as the edits, but they're also still in the attachments.
So, they're in attach...
I guess what I'm asking is only to see the ones that are for second read. Because if we're not gonna adopt JGECAA, then I don't feel like it should be a part of the attachment.
That, that's fine. Our recommendation is that you do not adopt it. It was on there for information because that did come from KASB, and I wanted you to at least see what they were recommending that we were saying we shouldn't adopt, so that if there are questions...
I think it just can be confusing if we continue to have all of those things. The second read should only be the policies that were, that, my interpretation, should only be the policies that we're working towards adopting versus...
What we could maybe do to help out...
I'm fine with that. I just, I think that's not what the motion said. I'm fine with doing what you ask. I just, I think the motion was to accept the recommendations, which would include not adopting a policy, and I...
Correct.
I think that it, if the recommendation is to not adopt a policy, a proposed policy, the Board does need to be aware of what that proposed policy was that I'm recommending you don't adopt. However you want to do it, I understand what you're saying. It's easier if it's just the ones that you're proposing to be adopted, right?
I mean, I think that goes back to even the incident is when it's there, it gives the, for someone who maybe hasn't been following, it gives like, oh, they're getting ready to adopt this policy, and that's not actually true.
Right.
And I think that's where some of our, like, confusion sometimes lies in. Because they don't see the email that I have that outlines what you're saying.
Yeah, the other way we could do it is we could just list the ones that we're recommending to adopt, and the motion could reflect that, but that's not what the current motion says. And I'll do it however the Board pleases.
Ms. Page and then Ms...
Make a friendly motion.
Amendment.
That was a motion.
Yeah, so, so if, what I'm hearing, if we could, we could potentially amend the motion to only approve those for first read, those recommended, those that are being recommended for adoption, not the ones that are not being recommended. So clean up the motion just to say these are being, if we could do, do that.
I'll accept that.
Okay. Mr. Goheen, will you please repeat those that are being adopted by that motion?
So, the ones that are being recommended for adoption as modified are Board Policy BCBK, Board Policy CJ, Board Policy EBBG, Board Policy EE, Board Policy GARIA, Board Policy IF, Board Policy JG... No, I'm sorry, strike that one. Board Policy JQE, Board Policy JGFGA, Board Policy JH, and Board Policy KK.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions?
And then I just want to clarify, because we're getting rid of Policy BBG, do we need a second motion thereafter?
Correct. I wasn't sure how to include the deletion with...
Yep, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
So we're gonna have a second motion to delete BBG?
Yes, correct.
Hold on just a second. Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Is there a motion to delete Policy BBG?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Rachel Russell, yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Russell.
Thank you. And so for clarity, the other policies are not being recommended, and so we're not moving forward.
And we won't include those in the second read.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Goheen.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Sarah.
All right. Moving along to our next agenda item, item nine A. Board, at this time, we have before you in Board Docs all of the information that has been discussed and covered regarding our upcoming budget for this fiscal year. And so it is here for your review and just so that it's all centrally located for your discussion. If there are any questions around this, you can share tonight or email Dr. Stubblefield, and we'll make sure that we respond around that. The one issue that we do, I do want to get a little bit of clarity or make sure that we're all on the same page, is regarding the Board budget. You do have that in front of you. I emailed that, and Ms. Smith did as well in the last couple of weeks. And we just want to make sure that the Board is agreeable to the Board budget that has been presented. It does show a percentage decrease in budget, just like the other departments were asked to do. We also decreased our budget, and you'll find that under the 2425 Draft Budget column. It was around $15,000, I think, is what it turned out to be in that budget item. I do just want to make sure for clarity that the Board saw a couple of pieces on the Board budget, two of them being around added language or an added line item around committee costs and the World Cafe and Listening and Learning Tours that the Board would like to see. There was, there were some dollars added to those line items in case the Board would like to host any Listening and Learning Tours and/or if the committees are going to host meetings and need to provide anything for those committees. There is some money available for the Board, and there's a process that's laid out to work with Ms. Smith around accessing those dollars. The other piece I want to make sure that the Board understands, and I did have a question just to make sure around clarity, our professional development. We've discussed in the past, all Board members were allowed to travel to three professional development conferences, including KASB, NSBA, and then one other. This year, through conversation with the Board, it was decided that it would be two conferences, so from three to two, that every Board member would have from three to two. That does include the KASB conference. So if you do go to KASB, that counts towards one of your two conferences or any other conference. So just wanted to make sure folks were clear about that. Now, if you do pay your own way for a conference or find, you know, if your job pays for a conference or something to that nature, that would not count towards your two conferences, or we would not use the Board budget for that. Or if, I know for instance, some of you serve on KASB's Board, and so they reimburse us for those, so that would not count towards your conference count if you are attending and they are reimbursing. So, just wanted to make sure that those changes were, that you noted those changes. And if there are any questions we can discuss, I would like to at least get consensus around the Board budget tonight so that it can be a part of the whole budget once it is approved at a future board meeting. If there are any suggested... If there are any suggested changes, now would be the appropriate time to do that.
I don't have any questions. I also just wanted to notate that we also added the clerk professional development after the evaluation process. So just wanted to notate that it's towards the bottom, but just wanted to make sure that is a new category for that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Russell.
I would make a motion that we approve the board budget as presented.
I second it.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve the board budget as presented. Are there questions or discussion?
Mr. Lopez, other question. When it comes to the listening and learning, is there a number on how many we're doing? I mean, we gave an amount. So do we know or have an idea with the cafes? How many are we planning to do? And does that budget cover that?
So great question. Ms. Page, I think if I remember at our board retreat, we had talked about at least one in the fall and one in the spring around the World Cafe, listening and learning styles, and then incorporating student, students and community, I think. So that was where this budget is coming from. I also know that different departments are doing and hosting listening and learning tours with high school students and middle school students that we can always use as a platform to also get some information. So, but as far as I know, it's a fall and a spring. And then, I mean, if the board wanted to add any additional, we could totally do so.
Okay, I just, I saw the numbers, but I didn't know how many, and I didn't, I didn't remember us saying how many. And then the, the World Cafe for the students, just one?
I believe that's what was suggested by the board as part of. And I think when I say World Cafe and Listening and Learning, they're kind of interchangeable in that because there was the student World Cafe and then the community Listening and Learning slash World Cafe. So I think that's up to the board to define what that looks like, if it's a student World Cafe or a community World Cafe. But, but a total, if I remember correctly, were two, one in, one in fall and one in spring.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lopez, we going from three to two, learning, uh, listening and learning? But what was it prior to? What do we have prior?
I believe we had two this past year as well.
We're not getting rid of.
We're not, no, we're not getting rid, getting rid of one. And as mentioned, I believe like D E, DI department and a couple of other departments are planning to host some community forums and/or World Cafes that we could also work in partnership with those departments if there was anything in specific that the board wanted to collect information on. I'm sure they would be open to hearing our thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Okay. Motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.?
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell? Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board, any questions on the budget that's in front of you, the information that's in front of you? Again, if you don't have questions tonight but would like, have any questions, please submit those to Dr. Stubblefield. All the information that's been covered in the past is here for your review as well.
I just have one question.
Yes.
I still don't see the responses from the board on here.
It is, if it's not on there, it should be, and I apologize, but I thought it was at the very bottom.
I see principal responses.
So right above, if you see board needs assessment, state review questions, those are your responses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay. Seeing and hearing none. Thank you, board. I do just want to recognize, I did see a hand in the audience. Tonight is not for public hearing, public comment. That will be on September 10th where you would be invited. Apologies, so, but you are welcome to come back on September 10th at that public hearing. Thank you. Okay, board, next on our agenda is item nine B. Board, in front of you tonight, we've been discussing a potential bond proposition and what that may or may not look like, and if it is, if it is the will of the board to move forward with that or not. Tonight, in front of you, you have the bond presentation that was presented previous, at a previous board meeting, including a couple of options for a bond proposal and potential costs to taxpayers if the board wanted to move forward. Again, what the board would be voting on tonight would be whether we wanted to take this to a November ballot. If we do want this to go on a November ballot, we have to have a resolution on that tonight to meet the deadline. So would entertain any questions or discussion on the bond? I will, as a refresher, board, we've been talking about two potential bond items. One is $180 million bond project that would not raise the mill levy for the board or for the district on that project. And you do see the projects outlined. The second is a $260 million bond project, which would be a mill levy increase. And in the presentation, you also see the projects that were in the previous bond proposal that did not pass. And you'll see the amount that the taxpayers would be, that it would cost our taxpayers if we do have to raise the mill on a bond proposal. So, but the $180 million bond proposal would not increase the mill. So I'll open it up for discussion to the board. Ms. Page?
I went to the two sessions that we had, and it seemed like the crowd was kind of 50/50. 50% of the people were for it, and about 50% of the people were against it. And I don't know about anybody else, but yesterday in the mail, I got my new assessment on my house, and things went up. And, and I, I understand, I know we do have buildings that need to be repaired, fixed. I get that. For me, if we're gonna do this, I wouldn't go beyond 180 million. Do those schools, because Central does, I worked there, and it wasn't a pretty site. Need some repairs, Argentine, Silver City, Noble Prentice, Sumner, the additional classrooms. But we have to consider that people are struggling, and it doesn't mean that they don't care. I think everybody in this room wants better schools, want better things. But those of us who live in this city, who pay taxes, they're killing us. And there's not a lot of options. We know taxes are gonna go up. And there, even though we say your taxes won't go up, I want to be real. They are going up, and I'm supporting. I don't have a problem with the 180, because we do need to do something to our schools. But I don't want to say your taxes aren't going up, because if you got your letter in the mail like I did yesterday, they going up. And I get what you're saying about the mill levy, I get that, but you're gonna pay some more. And I think we need to keep it to a point. I can go with the 180, and that's even hard, because people are struggling. And some people can do it better than others, but it doesn't mean that they don't care. They do. If you live here, you will see what some of us are kind of angry and upset about, because it's killing us. And then when you think about other options, I was in a meeting yesterday. I asked about a earners' tax. They said it was against the law. State of Kansas voted against that. Then tried to see, there were some other monies. The state decided to keep that for themselves, but they know some of us are struggling. So I just asked if we have some mercy. 180 to me is reasonable, as best as we can.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Your comments, thoughts?
I just want to take a moment to just, I know I wasn't able to attend, but I just want to thank the staff and the team. Very quick response turnaround time, who hosted a meeting last week, and continue to appreciate those in our community who share their feedback for and against. I think that's an important piece of the puzzle, regardless where you stand. I have no doubt that people in KCK care about our schools, care about our kids. I don't want to belabor this anymore, but an investment in our schools is also an economic investment in our community. So folks talk about expanding the tax base. The economics study will tell you that if you have better schools, have better access to resources and amenities and all the things that make thriving communities, folks want to live here. And I, I understand that we want to take care of folks who are already here, but the biggest investment that we can also make in the people who, for the people who live here is also creating a community where other people want to be a part of this as well. So I'm happy and thrilled to make the motion. So I'll go ahead and do it so that we don't belabor this. So I will make a motion to proceed with proposition one and move to adopt a resolution authorizing and providing for the calling of a bond election in Unified School District Number 500, Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the district. Separate questions of issuing general obligation bonds of the district, authorizing application to the State Board of Education for the authority to call the bond election and for capital improvement, state aid, and providing for the giving of notice of the bond election. Our kids deserve this, and I look forward to seeing how the community votes on November 5th.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. And for clarity, proposition one is the $180 million, as Ms. Russell pointed out. So I just want to make sure that that's clear for the board. Is there a second?
A second.
There is a second to that. I'll open the floor for further discussion or questions.
Can I get a little clarity on the second part? Did she mention about, something about the bond? I just want to make sure I heard it correctly.
So I will call Steve to the stage because I just put the motion, I spoke on the motion as it is specific for K S D E. So if he wants to speak to the clarity around all of the pieces of the motion. And I'm assuming you're talking about the obligation bonds, the application. So that, really that clarification, and maybe I can answer it, is the process for which the next steps are. So we'll have to go to the Board of Education, get that requirement, get their approval for the state aid portion of the bond, going back to how the state pays about 31%. And then after that process, then it'll go to the election office. The election office will approve to add it onto the ballot. And so really, that piece is just saying, hey, we as the board know that these are the variety of steps that are needed and that we give our approval, that that is the direction from us as board to the administration to complete those steps. Tell me if I said anything wrong. Okay.
Additional questions? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, there is a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.?
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes. But remember, people are struggling. That's all I'm asking. We're doing this, but just keep that in mind, that they're struggling. Yeah.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, board, we will hear from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few quick announcements. First, I do want to echo the sentiments earlier congratulating our fellows. And it's great to have like Dr. Jones here, who was one of the original fellows, and then to see how far we've come. This is just one example of how we continue to be creative and innovative around recruiting and retaining staff during this nationwide shortage of teachers. I also want to take a moment at the last board meeting to share what we shared with those individuals who spoke publicly. I did reach out to them and also send an email if they left contact information, and it included the following. "Thank you for taking the time to speak with the board regarding policy and guidance for students who may be transitioning. We appreciate your engagement and concern. Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools currently does not have a policy on the topic you mentioned. The guidance document you referenced was part of an informational presentation made to the Board of Education on September 18th, 2017, and was never adopted, approved, or implemented. As such, there is no action for the board to take regarding the request to change the language in that document. In any situation where a student expresses concerns for their safety and well-being, we follow federal and state law and board policy, which may involve contacting the Department for Children and Family Services and/or the police." Again, thank you for taking the time to speak to the Board of Education. And so that is what we'll share with those individuals who came to speak at the last meeting. I also have to take a moment to make a quick correction. I want to publicly apologize to Rosedale Middle School. In our celebration at the convocation, which was amazing, we highlighted the new Data in Action class that 88 graders took last year that they, and they earned their NC3 certification and diploma plus endorsement. It, we should have said Gloria Willis and Rosedale and Colby Bruce will be added. We said Gloria Willis and Colby Bruce. So we're excited, because we'll have maybe 160 this year. But I did want to acknowledge that Rosedale was a part of that inaugural group, and we will also include this in our, all of our communications. And I wish Rosedale would have told us there, so we could have corrected there. But nevertheless, we want to say congratulations to Rosedale and Gloria Willis, and we look forward to bringing Colby Bruce on board and hopefully eventually spreading it to all of our middle schools. I also want to congratulate Crystal Watson and the foundation staff and all of the volunteers who are successful back-to-school fair. The venue was great, and there was plenty of room at Homefield. And Homefield has been great partners with us, especially the last few weeks. And we look forward to the partnership. We actually had an opportunity to brainstorm around some, navigate some challenges that we wake, we face for gym space, and they are on board. And we look forward to those things coming forth this fall and winter. Want to say congratulations to Sumner Academy students who hosted an event this past Saturday to honor the school's past and present. The special ribbon-cutting event showcased a new mural in the school's atrium along with two newly decorated display cases. The recently relocated display cases highlighted many of the great accomplishments of Sumner High School and Sum, and Sumner Academy students. This project has been an effort by students who are part of the 2020 Leadership Organization. Their mission is to provide high school students with experimental learning opportunities to help expand their education beyond the classroom. This is just a reminder to families, we sent information out. We want to make our families meal modifications for students with special diets aware that due to multiple barriers, variables beyond our control, excuse me, with our prime vendor and product manufacturers, we ask that families of students with special diets provide meals from home from Wednesday, August 14th to Friday, August 16th, to ensure student safety and dietary requirements. Sorry about that, and I will stop.
I can jump in if you'd like, Dr. Stubblefield, while you. And then if you have more, you can jump right back in. Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. Thank you, board. And again, I'll just reiterate again, congratulations to everyone, and thank you to everyone who helped put together a convocation. It was a great event. Every year, attend. Remember the power of one and the work that we have to do this year. Thank you for your support, and thank you in advance to all of our staff for the amazing work that you're gonna do this year. Just a great event. I also want to say thank you to Ms. Crystal Watson again and for the foundation for the work that you've put on in the back-to-school fair, convocation, the resource fair. You and your team have done an outstanding job, so thanks so much. And Crystal, thank you for going out and knocking on doors to thank the residents. I know that meant a lot to the residents that you spoke with, and we weren't able to get to everyone. I know you're, you know, you were out there hustling in the rain. But, but thank you for doing that. I know it meant a lot to those residents who, who you spoke with and who reached out to us. And I know, I just want to publicly also say thank you to those residents who maybe had a car parked and, and, you know, on their curb or in front of their curb, and, and I know we've got some things to work through, but the effort that you and your team made to work with our community was great, so thank you for that. I also want. Also, want to shout out, I want to get this right, our students, we had students who participated in the Kansas Future Teacher Academy, the KFTA, which is an opportunity for current high schoolers who are interested in becoming teachers. They stay on the campus, learn for five days, and learn about social emotional learning and others, project-based learning, active engagement, and they've grown from 60 students, 40 high schools in 2022, to over 140 students in 90 high schools in 2024. We had attendees from, two attendees from J.C. Harmon, one from Sumner Academy, two from Washington this year, Ashtrika Resh, Vandal Harris, Silas Brown, Michaela Clark, Red Johnson. Congratulations to you students for the work that you did in that. We're really proud of you, and we'd love to see that grow in the future. So if you are a high school student who is interested in becoming a teacher, this is a great path and a great program for you to be a part of. So reach out to our, your principal, and we'll make sure, and our student support programs who can help get you the information you need for that. With that, again, congratulations to all of our kiddos who are coming back today, yesterday, today, tomorrow, and then Thursday, no, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, Wednesday, first day of school for everyone. So we're really excited to see all of you back in our classrooms with all that joy and laughter and those smiles. So thank you, welcome back, and we look forward to a great year this year. Pass it back to Dr. Stubblefield in case there was anything else you had.
There was only two other things I was going to say. Welcome back to all of our students and parents who officially start tomorrow. We have FA days the last two days, and we're excited to get the school year started and to remind everybody that they're a 10 and a power of one. And then I, I'll come back at the end.
Board, Ms. Page.
Yeah. First, I want to give condolences. We lost, I'm quite sure there may be more, a few more, but what I know of, Robert Lee, who was a coach and teacher in our district at Arrowhead and Wyandotte. 15 years ago, he had a massive stroke. I don't know if anybody remembers him, but he had been in a coma for a long time. So his services were on Saturday. So we give our condolences to his family. We also lost Levita Davis, who was ISS person at Colby Bruce. They had her services on Saturday as well. And we've had a lot of great people come through here and just hate to see it pass and we not mention them. Charlesetta Jackson, who's our family and community engagement specialist, shared with us, she's at New Chelsea, that New Chelsea was recognized at the ESEA Conference in Portland, Oregon, Oregon in February. We kind of missed it, but we want to give New Chelsea their kudos, their kudos, to say thank you and to thank her for what she does for our kids. Also, on the eighth convocation, I thought was phenomenal. I think everybody enjoyed it, and we just need to keep doing that to get everybody's morale up. Our back to school fair was awesome. Again, Ms. Watson, thank you so much. I know sometimes we don't always agree, but I give credit where credit is due. You did a phenomenal job. So I want to thank you for that. And that's about it. Just hope that everyone has a great year, and we just keep working hard.
Thank you, Ms. Brownlee Page. And I had this in my notes, and I just wanted to acknowledge and congratulate Ms. Brownlee Page, who was elected in the primary to the, as a state rep. So we're very happy and excited for you, Ms. Brownlee Page, as a newly elected state rep. And we know you will represent the district and our community very well out there. You've got your work cut out for you. I don't envy you, but I know you're going to do a great job out there. So thank you for your service in that, and congratulations. Ms. Clark.
Can I just add to Ms. Page's list? We also lost Mr. Kearney. He was a coach in this district for years, and so a coach at Washington High School, made an impact on a lot of our students, so just think of his family as well.
And I'll also, I know she's not here tonight, but also congratulate Dr. Valdigna Nguyen, who also won her election, her primary this past primary season. So congratulations to Dr. Nguyen. You both have your work cut out for you, but I appreciate, we appreciate your service. So, Ms. Russell, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. As Dr. Stubblefield was talking, I was thinking of that one song where it's like, "Welcome back, welcome back, welcome back." It's like a...
Go ahead.
Listen, when you be doing your singing at graduation or your music re-additions, I don't say anything, but...
I can sing.
Listen, now she roasting. No, I just wanted to say welcome back to a new school year, to all of our staff and families, as well as our students. It's an exciting time as a parent in this district. It has also been exciting to see the excitement on the kid, the students' faces as they're coming back through the buildings, greeting teachers they've known from the past, but also getting to meet new staff. That's probably one of my favorite parts of this back to school time, as well as the bands are like killing it right now. So if you haven't been following them on social media, I'm looking forward to the battle of the bands this year. Sumner already told me some of their fun little things they're going to do, so I'm excited for that. But I also wanted to take a moment, I know a lot of us had the opportunity to attend the reception hosted by Sumner High School alumni, and what a valuable way to just honor and recognize the life of Chester Owens and his, what he has done for Casey Kay, not only as a historian, but also as someone in this community who cares and just does a lot. And there aren't any enough words to share how powerful that reception was and how moving it was, but also just a reminder that we have to continue to teach our kids the history of Sumner, but also the history of how we got to where we are. Yesterday, I walked the halls of Sumner Academy, and because of Sunday's ribbon cutting, they now have two murals that kind of identify Sumner High School and Sumner Academy. And I got to share that with my daughter, and she talked about, we talked about just reading the story, the book of Sumner together over the next year, and reflecting on the journey that she gets to have as a student of color walking down those hallways and what that meant before 1984. Did I get it right? And so I'm excited for that journey, but just also wanted to recognize the High School Association, Sumner High School Association for a tremendous job and the work that they're doing. They also encouraged everyone on this board, and I encourage everyone on the leadership team and the cabinet to also join the Alumni Association to show our support, but also continue to honor the legacy of those who came before us. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Board members? Hey, it's going to be an exciting year and lots to do, so I'm sure you'll have plenty back to report on in the future. And I will just say, board members, with KESB conference upcoming in November, if you did submit to Ms. Smith that you wanted to attend, I know she's going to register, folks, we wanted to wait to make sure folks understood the professional development piece, but she has your information. Ms. Smith, you can go ahead. If you still want to attend, we'll go ahead and make sure everyone's registered this week. I'm sorry, Dr. Stubblefield.
Before we close out, just, again, I wanted to congratulate Ms. Page and Dr. Nguyen on their election, but also celebrating, in August, we have a lot of board members with birthdays, and today is actually Mr. Lopez's birthday, so I just want to say happy birthday to him. And the other August birthdays are...
Virgo season, August 26?
Ms. Drew. And so I, because it was actually his birthday and he's here, I was like, we should say happy birthday. I didn't, I'm not singing, Ms. Page.
Thank you all for coming to my birthday party today.
I love it.
With that, board, we're on item 11. I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of all parties involved under coma for seven minutes, going in at 6:20.
So moved.
Moved and seconded questions, discussion. It will include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheens, Dr. Jones, Mr. Lilly, and Dr. Campbell. No questions? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All other staff, you are free to go. Have a good evening.
To return to open session, please.
Move.
Moved by Ms. Drew, seconded by Ms. Russell. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark. Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan, Jr.
Mylan, Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are motion to... Leslie, we're going to go to B now. Is there a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma, with potential action to follow, to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Mr. Lilly, Dr. Campbell, and Dr. Jones for... How much time do you need? For five minutes, going in at 6:30. Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Ms. Russell. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan, Jr.
Mylan, Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to return to open session, please. Moved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Ms. Russell. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan, Jr.
Mylan, Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters, non-elected personnel in order to protect privacy interests of all parties involved, under coma, to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohein, with potential action to follow? For, sorry, for ten minutes going in at 6:45. Moved by Ms. Clark.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Drew. Any questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan, Jr.
Mylan, Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell. Oh, excuse me, Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan, Jr.
Mylan, Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution presented?
Some of them. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan, Jr.
Mylan, Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to waive liquidated fees as requested by individual CC?
Some of them.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan, Jr.
Mylan, Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good meeting, everybody. Happy first day of school. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.